We're gonna call to order the St. James Parish School Board meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, beginning at five thirty P. M. One, open of meeting. A, prayer Angela Washington and B, pledge of allegiance Marty Pochette.
Father, God, and the kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trust us against us, and lead us not into temptation, but to the salvation of the young. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Ms. Washington and Mr. Pochette. C, roll call, Chris Kimball, Superintendent.
Mr. Pochette?
Here.
Ms. Cantella?
Here.
Ms. Washington?
Here.
Mr. Grohl?
Here.
Mrs. DeTillier?
Here.
Ms. Florant?
Here.
And President Byer?
Here.
D, discussion and approval of meeting minutes from December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
So move.
Motion by Marty DeTillier, second by Angela Washington. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. E, election of offices. Superintendent Kimball.
Thank you President Byer. At this time, we'd like to open the floor for nominations for president for the school board. So at this time, we're taking nominations, the floor's open. Any nominations?
I would nominate Nicole Florant for president.
Ms. Washington nominates Nicole Florant. Any other nomination? Any other nomination? At this time, we'll close nominations. Since there's no other nominations on a motion by Ms. Washington, she's nominated. Ms. Florant was nominated without any opposition, so Ms. Florant is awarded school board president. Congratulations Ms. Florant.
Congratulations.
And President Byer will continue this meeting and President-elect Florant will take over at the next meeting in February. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment.
Let's get through the vice president.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's do that and then we'll come back for comments. At this time, since now that Ms. Florant is now president, we will open the floor for nominations for vice president. Coach DeTillier?
I'd like to nominate Marty Pochette.
I accept.
Any other nominations at this time? Any other nominations for vice president? Since there's no opposition on a motion by Tim DeTillier nominated Mr. Marty Pochette for vice president, Mr. Marty Pochette is awarded school board vice president. Congratulations. Ms. Diana?
Yes, sir. First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Ms. Byer for all her dedication they did through the challenging times we had.
You're welcome. I enjoy it, yes, yes, yeah, something good always comes out, so I enjoy it.
Well, I need to comment, I want to thank you guys for allowing me this position, this opportunity. I would only hope to be as good as our past presidents, because I know that they've got some big shoes to fill when I came on and we had some very good presidents all these years, and so I'm just hoping that I can do as well of the job as they have. Congratulations, Marty.
Thank you. I did a lot, Sue, great job, appreciate all you've done. I've only been on here for a few years, know what some of you leaders who prior to me have done, appreciate that hard work. Honored to be vice president for this group and look forward to upcoming year working with Nick.
Like you said, thank you Sue for this past year presidency. Thank you Sue, you did a good job. Good job, two more years for us. And congratulations to Nicole, president. Congratulations to Marty Pochette, vice president. Steve DeTrey, Roy.
And I just, Coach DeTillier, go ahead.
Well, I just, see, I did all, you know, but Sue really did a good job. I'm retired, mostly all of working, and I don't know if I went to go as many events as humanly possible, and she was there, I don't know how she did it, she must know the principal over there, but she didn't necessarily beat him.
I'm blessed to be supported by my principal.
Did excellent job, so really appreciate it.
Yeah, and from the superintendent, from me to the president, many phone calls, daily or weekly, a lot of calls back and forth, so I appreciate her leadership with the board and her guidance, and you know, it's important, right, that we, as a board, we work together with the superintendent, and it takes leadership to do that, so I appreciate that Sue, so thank you very much, thank you. And congratulations, and I look forward to working with Ms. Florant and Mr. Pochette, which we always do work together anyway, but in a more, probably you'll hear from me a little bit more Ms. Florant than what you usually hear from me, but we'll get that -
More than that?
We'll get that, we'll get that down pat, so thank you.
And one last comment, thank y'all for walking alongside of me. Sorry, Ms. Washington.
It's okay, that's okay, I just wanted to say -
For the last, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Just for walking alongside of me, you know, some of us have been together for the last ten years. When I first was elected to the school board, I was thinking, wow, I could do three terms, that's twelve years. Guys, it's been ten years, time flies. So, you know, we're at the end of our third term, and me and Raymond and Ms. Diana Cantella. And Nicole Florant. So, it's been my pleasure to serve as your board president. Ms. Washington?
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations Nicole, and it's been a pleasure having you Sue as our president, you did an awesome, amazing job, and I know you continue to, because we work together as a board, we're all one. Titles doesn't mean that you're above anyone at work, so with that being said, congratulations also, vice president Marty, it's gonna be a great year, I'm looking forward to a beautiful year, so let's get it started.
Two, committee meeting reports. A, executive committee report of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, Chairperson Sue Byer. The St. James Parish School Board Executive Committee met in a school board meeting room on Monday, January thirteenth, at four P. M. Members present, Nicole Florant, Sue Byer, and Tim DeTillier. The purpose of the meeting was to review the tentative agenda and set the agenda for the January fourteenth school board meeting. It was motion by Tim DeTillier and seconded by Nicole Florant, in unanimous we carried, to approve the agenda for the January fourteenth school board meeting. It was motion by Nicole Florant and seconded by Tim DeTillier to adjourn at four fifteen P. M.
President, President Byer, at this time, I would ask to move to add an agenda item to the, at the board table. To add an agenda item, we need a unanimous vote to be able to do that, since it's the night of the meeting. The agenda items, discussion and approval of three of the CEIA Open Gate Weapons Detection Systems, and this item is in alignment with our priority three of the Board Strategic Action Plan. This is just a motion to add that, when we get to, if you guys approve of that, when we get to the item, then we'll discuss it and do what we need to do.
Motion by Tim DeTillier, seconded by Raymond Grohl. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. B, Finance Committee Report of January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, Chairman Raymond Grohl.
St. James Parish School Board Finance Committee met on Tuesday, January fourteenth, at four thirty P. M. Members present, Nicole Florant, Marty Pochette, and Raymond Grohl. Purpose was to get a report on the fall year twenty twenty-four audit, Ashley Monks and Kristen Holcomb. Number three, informational update on fall year twenty twenty-five, general fund budget, Ms. Ashley Monks. Number four, discussion and approval of Avenue Insights and Analytics LLC Sales Tax Collection System Annual Software License Agreement, Ms. Michelle Nogess. Number five, discussion and approval to move forward with Managed Print Services Contract, Ms. Kelly Cook. And number six was adjourned. Recommendations, motion by Marty Pochette, seconded by Nicole Florant, and unanimously carried, to approve Avenue Insights and Analytics LLC Sales Tax Collection System Annual Software License Agreement. Number two, motion by Nicole Florant and seconded by Marty Pochette, and unanimously carried, to approve to move forward with Managed Print Service Contract. Motion by Marty Pochette, seconded by Nicole Florant, the meeting was adjourned at four fifty-five P. M.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting? Motion by Tim DeTillier, seconded by Angela Washington. Any questions? I would like to add one comment, that I know we have a big audience tonight, and at this meeting, we were given a lot of great information, and in the last ten years, this is our highest fund balance that we've accrued, and I think a kudos goes to our superintendent Kimball and to his team. There's a lot of people that make that happen, but that's wonderful. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Raymond. Three, recognitions. A, recognition of congratulations to the Lucha High School Boy Swim Team, Superintendent Kimball.
Thank you President Byer. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Coach Tim DeTillier to read the resolution, and we're gonna wait for the team to get in here so they can hear it.
Y'all can come line in front, yep.
Come on, you guys, you want the front, get the tall ones in the back. Whereas, the Lucha High School Boy Swim Team were named Division Three State Runner-Ups, whereas the entire Boy Swim Team and coaching staff deserve recognition and congratulations, which has brought great honor and distinction to the individual athletes, the entire team, the school student body, the faculty and staff, parents, family, friends, and the Parish of St. James, and therefore, be it resolved that the St. James Parish School Board hereby commends these fine student athletes, the Lucha High School swim coaches, the school administrators, and parents, and community for their outstanding effort and support, and furthermore, that a copy of this resolution be sent to Athletic Director Dwayne Jenkins, Coach Kelly Richardson, and Principal Angie Pochette, and be incorporated into the minutes of this meeting dated at Lucha, Louisiana, the fourteenth day of January twenty twenty-five.
Coach, I'm gonna give the coaches an opportunity to do what they say.
Of course.
Come on, Coach.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
I do want to thank y'all for recognizing the swim team, we appreciate it that you took the time out to recognize us, but I just gotta commend this, this boys team. We came in, didn't know where we were gonna stand, and they delivered on the first day, and we were like blowing personal records out of the water, and to deliver it the second day was unbelievable. And yes, we did get runner-ups, but for us, we're the public school system that has made the top, the top, we're the only public school system that has made it, so I am very proud of these boys. Just to let you know, they get up at five, five-thirty, swim every morning, Monday through Thursday, go to school right after, and a lot of them do second sports or have jobs, and then by the time they get home, it's late and they start it all over again, and we do it for three to four months, so I'm proud of them and I appreciate all your love and support. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job, good job.
Thank you for all that you do. Oh, absolutely, I love, yes, this is -
Oh, yes.
Comments, they should stay, because we're not making comments.
We could make some comments, if y'all stay on the wall, if y'all stay on the side of the wall, so we can make comments. But we'll make them, we'll make them, we're not, y'all.
And the congratulations continues. B, recognition of congratulations to the St. James High School Football Team, Superintendent Kimball.
Thank you President Byer. At this time, I'm gonna ask President-elect Nicole Florant to read the resolution, and we have Coach Davis here, so Coach Davis, if you'd like to, we'll read the resolution, then we can come up and get a picture with you and have you speak.
Resolution of congratulations. Whereas, the St. James High School Football Team were named Division Three State Runner-Ups, whereas the entire football team and coaching staff deserve recognition and congratulations, which has brought great honor and distinction to the individual athletes, the entire team, the school student body, the faculty and staff, parents, family and friends of the Parish of St. James, and therefore, be it resolved that the St. James Parish School Board hereby commends these fine student athletes, all St. James High School football coaches, and the school administrators, parents, and community for their outstanding effort and support, and furthermore, that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Athletic Director Levante Davis, and Principal Sean Wu, and be incorporated into the minutes of this meeting dated at Lucha, Louisiana, this fourteenth day of January twenty twenty-five.
I'll be short, we have to get back across, we have a basketball game going on, so on behalf of coaching staff, the administration, St. James students, school and community, we want to thank you for the acknowledgement, thank you for the support and the continued support, we really appreciate it, there's a lot of hard work that goes into it, but as I always said, my parent meeting truly takes a village, there's no one lone person that gets this job done, so thank you again.
Board members, y'all want to come up for the pictures? And -
I would love to.
And then if y'all would like to -
I'm gonna take one, I'm gonna get out everybody else's -
Who we playing tonight?
What we got tonight?
South Jefferson?
Thank you, love you too.
I have some nice, I have some nice things to say about him.
C. Coach, which you'd like to say, the word will get back to him, word travels fast.
If there's anybody here from the west bank. I know how hard it is to get to the Superdome, and I know what kind of team he had last year, and he lost his best players, but yet this year, he did the same thing with a different group of players. You know how hard that is? But the main thing I want to say is, the kind of man that he is, I knew him from somewhere else, and he came here to St. James, and he's, he's, he's a solid Christian man, and when I, I went to a couple of games, and I see it reflected in his team, by the way they carried on prior to the game, and then even after the game, he's, he's a blessing to us.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Diana?
I commented to Angelo, that he reminds me of Dr. Dallas' coach. Doesn't he look like it? I think so.
Yeah, she's telling them.
Anybody else?
Coach, to piggyback on what's Coach Tim said, that's a conversation I had with Coach Davis, and like I said, try to see, I don't visit him much, y'all, but I go holler at him every once in a while, and after that Superdome, prior to going to the Superdome, I spoke to Coach Davis, and it's his demeanor, how he get across to the kids, and after that game, I went to see him again, and I told him, I'm so proud, because y'all, so many athletic sports we have today, the kids, they don't show respect, okay? We had zero personal files out there. The kids played the game, they took all the, the beating, whatever, you know, what it was, took the loss, and everything was gratefully, shook hands, you know, gratefully and all it, went on about, nothing negative, nothing at all, you know, and I congratulate them on that every time I see them, I love it, I love it in the kids.
Piggyback, well, go back a little further though, for the Lucha High Swim Team, I know that's not easy getting up five-thirty in the morning, doing nothing, especially for children, doing, doing anything at five-thirty in the morning, I don't want to get up at five-thirty in the morning. So I know that they must have worked really hard, and it was good to see them out here, and I mean, like he, like she said, they have jobs, and they probably got to do schoolwork, and then they have to do all that, so I mean, it attests to when you want to do something, how you make provisions to do it, and you, you show that you want to be a part of something, getting up five-thirty in the morning. Also, to them St. James Wildcats, Coach Davis, like Raymond said, the respect that I see in those children, it has to come from leadership, from coaching, from the people that they, you know, that's giving them their, their leadership, and, and it speaks a lot about them, because they are some respectable young men, and I'm not even that big on, on high school football, I don't know much about what's going on, but to see the, the sportsmanship was, was awesome.
Agreed, and not only that, lots of lots of young kids returning again next year, so get your tickets. Go on back.
I'll drive y'all again.
Appreciate that, Sue.
All right, thank y'all. C, recognition of school board members, Superintendent Kimball.
As you know, January is School Board Member Recognition Month, and I would just like to really say how much I appreciate each and every one of our board members. It's going on two years that I've been here, and I can tell you, the, the support of each and every single board member around this table has been nothing but great, and you know, I go around the state at meetings and meet with other superintendents, and we speak about, you know, different areas of the state and the way things happen, and, and a lot of positives, but some things that, around the state that doesn't happen, that's too positive, and, but when, when I get asked to speak, I just speak about the great things we have going on in St. James, and that is because of the leadership of this board, and, and our staff, and our teachers, and I think we have a great, great thing happening, and so it starts with the board, so thank you. But I do have a resolution I'd like to read, and, and celebrating you guys, and as you see throughout the month, we will do little things to honor your leadership. So whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children, and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to democratic society and the ever-changing world, and whereas the local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners, and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child, and whereas the local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students, and whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation of our school system, and whereas the local school board members are strong advocates for public education, and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public, and to the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, I, Superintendent Chris Kimball, do hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the St. James Parish School Board, and proclaim January twenty twenty-five as School Board Recognition Month in St. James Parish. I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and the hard work of local school board members, and in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. In official recognition whereof, I hereby have signed this document, the fourteenth day of January twenty twenty-five. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments?
All right, well, I have one to say. But thank you, because like you said, we work, the board and the superintendent must work together, y'all, and I say, I, you know, I've been on the board, like Sue said, the last ten years, and nobody compares to this St. James Parish Board, okay? We had the election, we had new members, and guess what? No one still compares to St. James Parish Board. Thank you Superintendent.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you Superintendent for the recognition, we really do appreciate everything that you do and how we work together. This board has been awesome, with everybody coming in, it's like we, it didn't change, I still got my, my George over there, my Mr. Wop right here, it's kind of just like, the same togetherness, and I really appreciate each and every one of y'all, thank you so much.
It's a blessing to serve, I enjoy it, Sue, as hard as it is. Right, four, business, finance, and instruction.
Yes, at this time, this is the agenda item that you allowed to come by vote tonight, so I'll read the agenda item again, I'll have Dustin come up to speak to it, and then we'll have to ask for public comment in regards to this agenda item, and then take a vote after, after that. So the agenda item reads as such, discussion and approval of three CEIA Open Gate Weapons Detection Systems. This item aligns with priority three of the Board Strategic Action Plan, Dustin Jenkins.
Good evening, board. Came to y'all in the last year, last quarter, and asked for approval for our pilot program on the CEIA Open Gate Weapons Detection System. Since that time, we have taken delivery of the system and went through our mandatory training, and have been utilizing the system at multiple campuses. It has made an appearance at C-three, Lucha High School, St. James High School, as well as at Meeks. It's been at sporting events for the district, most recently the playoff game held at St. James High School. I'm not sure if any of y'all had the opportunity to go through the system and see that it is less invasive than a -
two thousand twenty-four, to authorize the renewal of a special tax there in Ashley Muntz.
Good evening. As y'all are aware, we had the miller renewal election back in, on December seventh, we had two propositions. Both of those propositions passed in favor. So this is just the final official step of that to get this canvassing done, get the resolution taken care of. It'll get sent over to the bond attorneys, and they'll file everything that needs to be filed with the state and get all that taken care of, so that way our renewals can go through and everything will be taken care of. So this is just the final step in the results of the election.
Motion by Marty Pochet, seconded by Nicole Florent. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Muntz. B, discussion and approval of contract between St. James Parish School Board and Rousal Therapy Services, LLC. This item aligns with Priority Four of the Strategic Action Plan. Kelly Cook.
Good evening, everyone. This proposed contract is for Therapy SLP, Speech, Language, Pathology Services, which will be provided at CGMA. As you may recall, CGMA has the Head Start as well as your pre-K students there, and so that is typically where we have the largest number of students that need those type of services. As we move into the year, school year, and there are more evaluations done, those numbers have grown. There's one therapist there, and she has the biggest caseload in the district. And so we just giving her some assistance with providing therapy to our students.
Can I get a motion by Raymond Grove, seconded by Tim DeTillier? Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. C, discussion and approval of contract for SLP Services. This item aligns with Priority Four of the Strategic Action Plan. Kelly Cook.
Recently, we are always excited to promote from within, and so we had our speech therapist that services our students at St. James High School in St. Louis Academy that was promoted to the people appraisal team as the speech diagnostician for the district. So while we're very happy for her, that does leave a hole in our therapy services. And I see Nicole shaking her head because I'm sure it's like that in her district as well. Speech therapists are very hard to find. And so we are asking the board just to approve this contract. We do not have a name yet of the speech therapist because we are still looking. We have a couple of interviews with companies set up. The rate is established at eighty-five dollars an hour. That's what we have on our other contracts. So when we do have an offer to give, we didn't want to delay by having to wait till the February board meeting.
Motion by Diana Cantilla, seconded by Angela Washington. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Muntz.
Thank you.
B, discussion and approval of contract between St. James Parish School Board and Rousal Therapy Services, LLC. This item aligns with Priority Four of the Strategic Action Plan. Kelly Cook.
Good evening, everyone. This proposed contract is for Therapy SLP, Speech, Language, Pathology Services, which will be provided at CGMA. As you may recall, CGMA has the Head Start as well as your pre-K students there, and so that is typically where we have the largest number of students that need those type of services. As we move into the year, school year, and there are more evaluations done, those numbers have grown. There's one therapist there, and she has the biggest caseload in the district. And so we just giving her some assistance with providing therapy to our students.
Can I get a motion by Raymond Grove, seconded by Tim DeTillier? Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. C, discussion and approval of contract for SLP Services. This item aligns with Priority Four of the Strategic Action Plan. Kelly Cook.
Recently, we are always excited to promote from within, and so we had our speech therapist that services our students at St. James High School in St. Louis Academy that was promoted to the people appraisal team as the speech diagnostician for the district. So while we're very happy for her, that does leave a hole in our therapy services. And I see Nicole shaking her head because I'm sure it's like that in her district as well. Speech therapists are very hard to find. And so we are asking the board just to approve this contract. We do not have a name yet of the speech therapist because we are still looking. We have a couple of interviews with companies set up. The rate is established at eighty-five dollars an hour. That's what we have on our other contracts. So when we do have an offer to give, we didn't want to delay by having to wait till the February board meeting.
Motion by Diana Cantilla, seconded by Angela Washington. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. D, discussion and approval of differentiated compensation plan. This item aligns with Priority Four of the Strategic Action Plan. Kelly Cook.
It's me again, here for something for HR this time. If you recall, we had this differentiated compensation plan last year before the board. This year, we did include it in the salary schedule. However, the guidelines that we received from the state requires that we also get the board to approve this separate plan. So this verbiage may seem familiar to you because it's already in the salary schedule, but we wanna make sure we're in compliance with state regs for this funding. And so this is the plan. Again, we're using it for mentor teachers, as well as for our service providers that have to provide supervisory services. So we are requesting approval of this plan.
Motion to approve by Angela Washington, seconded by Raymond Grove. Any questions or comments for Ms. Cook? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. E, discussion and approval of contract between St. James Parish School Board and Sunbelt for OT services. This item aligns with Priority Four of the Strategic Action Plan. Kelly Cook.
Okay, currently, we do have contract. We do not have any district OT, occupational therapists. We have all contracts, OTs. One of our contract OTs had to reduce her service time in the district, and so we just need someone to fill in for her extra time. And also the needs, again, at this time of the year, because these evaluations have come in, the caseload has increased. So we are requesting approval of a contract OT for the remainder of the school year.
Yeah, I'd just like to kinda touch base on this item because we do have a few part-time OTs within our school system currently. Going into next year, we're gonna be looking at the budget to possibly hire someone for us within our own system, our own employee, so that way we can kinda maybe reduce these contracts. So just to kinda give you that, a heads up on it.
Can I get a motion to approve? Nicole Florent, seconded by Tim DeTillier. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, discussion and approval of a CEIA Lubukin Street Turnaround. Kelly Cook.
Last one. These are two CEAs for a turnaround on a Lubukin, Barkin Street?
Lubukin.
Lubukin Street here in, on the East Baker, West Baker. I didn't know that term, that name. The homeowners, the landowners have graciously allowed us to use these turnarounds, so they do need some improvement so that the buses can have enough turning radius. Our maintenance consultant and maintenance department have already met with the homeowners. They have agreed to allow us to do this work, so we just request your approval so that we can get these turnarounds taken care of.
Sure move.
Motion by Marty Pochet, seconded by Raymond Grove. Any comments? I would like to thank Mr. Pochet for doing a lot, a lot, lot with this turnaround. When I head home and I still see the grandpa waiting in his golf cart in the cold, he's gonna be excited when it finally gets done and he doesn't have to do it. And the reason why it's Lubukin is because when they were naming our streets, down that street lives LeBlancs, bourgeois's, and Kindlers.
Ooh, that's creative. Lubukin. I would have never guessed this.
Yes, we all chuckled when we saw that street name, but it's Lubukin. So there's not really any Lubukins in there.
Okay, I was wondering. I'm like, I don't know that name.
It's actually next to our neighborhood.
He will be happy.
They will.
Once the bus is going back there.
Yes. Thank you so much for your help with that. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. G, executive session, superintendent evaluation. Can I get a motion to go in? Raymond Grove, seconded by Diana Cantilla. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Can I get a motion to go back into regular session? Motion by Raymond Grove, seconded by Diana Cantilla. All in favor? Any opposed? Five, closing of meeting. Condolences. Marilyn Gibbs, mother of Nicole Green, cafeteria technician at Paulina Elementary. Alfred Roget, retired bus driver. A motion to adjourn by Marty Pochet, seconded by Tim DeTillier at six-thirty P M.